This hearing of the Subcommittee on Horticulture, Research, Biotechnology and Foreign Agriculture to consider the societal benefits of biotechnology will come to order. I'd like to first welcome everyone. Good morning, and I'm going to give an opening statement on behalf of Chairman Scott, who has lost his voice. Being from Georgia, I always thought we needed a translator anyway, so I didn't know what the problem was. But Austin has lost his voice and therefore has relinquished the gavel to me today, so on behalf of him, I apologize. I'm pleased to offer the opening statement on behalf of Chairman Scott. Thank you all for being here today to discuss an issue that has become increasingly important over the last two decades. The purpose of today's hearing of the Subcommittee on Horticulture, Research, Biotechnology and Foreign Agriculture is to consider the many benefits we as a society have realized through technological advances. In the field of agriculture, we cope with the challenge of feeding an ever-expanding world population while maintaining the safety, quality, diversity and affordability in our food supply that we as Americans have come to expect. Biotechnology has played a critical role in meeting a number of consumer and societal needs. From the earliest experiments with agriculture to present time, we have been growing, crossbreeding and fundamentally altering the crops and livestock we raise in order to meet the societal needs. As our needs have evolved, so has the use of technology. With each step in our technological development, we are able to produce more with less while simultaneously continuing to improve the safety, quality, diversity and affordability of the food that we consume. Biotechnology is the application of biological science that makes use of living organisms to provide new products for agricultural, industrial and medical uses. Consumers have long benefited from biotechnology. For example, biotech includes the use of microorganisms in bread making or the production of drug products such as insulin. As our capabilities have expanded, our potential for developing products that enhance benefits to consumers and producers has grown. Unfortunately, a combination of factors has intervened to challenge consumer acceptance of biological technologies and potentially threaten further enhancements in this field. Secretary of State John Kerry recently stated, "The challenge is that by 2050, the world's population is going to grow to nine billion people." That is going to demand at least a 60% increase over our current agricultural production. He went on to say, "It is simply true that biotechnology has dramatically increased crop yields. It has dramatically decreased loss due to pests and disease, and it allows us to feed more people without converting tropical forests or fragile lands in order to do so." So we save money, and we save the environment, and we save lives. It is a virtuous circle. It is particularly troubling that a small minority has so confused the vocabulary of biotechnology as to threaten the development of this science and its role in feeding and nourishing our people. Fighting disease, resolving the conflict between production agriculture and conservation, and doing all these things with fewer farmers on less land. Today, we will hear from witnesses who will further outline how society has benefited from these scientific achievements and the challenges that biotechnology faces in the future. We will hear about many specific advances, but I would like to highlight just a couple here. One great example of the consumer benefit to biotechnology is with the dietary vitamin A. It is estimated that vitamin A deficiency kills 670,000 children under the age of five each year. With the genetically engineered golden rice, which contains beta carotene, a precursor of vitamin A, we can significantly reduce the amount of vitamin A deficiency and deficient-related deaths in children around the world. Another example is with celiac disorder. This disorder affects one in every 133 individuals, with symptoms ranging from deterioration of the small intestines lining to osteoporosis. With advances in biotech wheat, both adolescents and adults can live a more fulfilling life with this genetically predisposed autoimmune disorder. Additionally, three-fourths of all Americans are deficient in vitamin D. Large deficiencies of vitamin D have been linked to cancer, heart disease, diabetes, soft bones in children and osteoporosis. Many Americans receive vitamin D from orange juice, yet the disease of citrus greening threatens to leave a large portion of the orange industry unusable. Without this vital industry, the number of Americans at risk of a vitamin D deficiency will rise indefinitely. increase the amount of vitamin D in each glass of orange juice. Utilization of these biotechnologies improves our environment, as the crops we are developing require a smaller carbon footprint by reducing the acres, water, and other resources needed to grow them. Biotechnology provides numerous benefits to not only the American consumer, but also to consumers worldwide. With the use of this technology, we can fight diseases, increase available food sources, and reduce overall environmental impact. In addition to the witnesses before us today, we have received submitted testimony and extraneous material that is relevant to today's hearing, and without objection, these materials will be included in the record. Before us today is a panel of five witnesses that will speak to these benefits. We are joined by Dr. David Just, professor of Applied Economics and Management at Cornell University; Dr. Olga Bolden-Tiller, assistant professor at Tuskegee University; Dr. Klestis Juma, professor of the Practice of International Development at Harvard University; and Mrs. Joanna Lidback, owner and operator of The Farm at Wheeler Mountain, a small family dairy operation. We appreciate the time each of you have given to prepare for this hearing. Your testimony will be important to show the effect new agricultural technology has on the consumer. Thank you. I would like to recognize now my colleague from Oregon, Ranking Member Schrader, for any opening remarks that he may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Frankly, I think you covered it pretty darn well. I really appreciate the opportunity to have this hearing, because I think it's time to put some good information out there. There's been an attempt to demonize hybrid and genetic engineering without, I think, fully understanding the benefits that we've had for thousands of years, and more recently, with the condensed timeframe with the biotechnology advances we have, to be able to do some of the things in a shorter timeframe, which some would say is a bad thing, or imply is a bad thing. I'm an organic farmer myself, practiced organic farming for twenty-some years, and, you know, you can grow things organically. There's no need to get into a whole 'nother labeling conflict or concern about something that, for all accounts, has been deemed just as safe as any other hybrid technology we've used, again, over the last century or two. So this is an opportunity for us to clear the air a little bit, no pun intended. I find it somewhat ironic that those very people that seem to be most concerned about climate change seem to be against one of the major tools we can use to actually combat some of the deleterious effects of current farming practices. There's less tillage needed with some of the biotechnology crops we have going on here. There's pesticide resistance that we can inculcate here. There's opportunities to increase the nutritional value of these crops that you alluded to, Mr. Chair. These are all good things that those very same people would be lauding in any other situation. And to be honest, I think, and I think some of the panel will talk about this today, what we have here is a failure to communicate. We have a situation where a lot of folks, from the social aspect of things, have not caught up, once again, with the technological advances we've made. We see this in telecommunications all the time, where, you know, we're way behind the curve trying to figure out how to regulate or not regulate the Internet and make sure that communication is done in a way where we're not using Ma-Bell-type of technologies to deal with modern advances. I think we're seeing the same thing here. You know, there's nothing that, and I'm a scientist, that I've seen that would negate food altered laboratory or altered in the field, done, you know, with the testing we have with FDA, USDA, is unhealthy or unsafe. And I'm very, very worried. Here's my biggest worry, Mr. Chairman, I'm interested in what the panel says. My biggest worry is that, under the guise of trying to inform the consumer, we actually misinform the consumer. We imply there's some problem where there's not a problem. Now, if we had a better education system and consumers were more savvy, but we run the risk at one point of making, frankly, labeling almost irrelevant and a moot point. And that would be a shame, because people do need to be informed about health hazards, environmental hazards that, you know, that they really would be worried about that could affect themselves or their children. So anyway, I look forward to the hearing. I think it's going to be a good one, and hopefully help clear the air a little bit. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ranking Member Schroeder. Obviously, we've already introduced the witness panel. I'd like to go ahead and begin with your testimony, and we'll start with Dr. Just. Please begin when you're ready.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Subcommittee for the invitation to testify regarding consumer perceptions and benefits of biotechnology. I commend you for giving attention to this important topic. I am David Just, a professor of Applied Economics and Management at Cornell University. For the past sixteen years, I've conducted research in the field of agricultural and food economics. I've published dozens of studies examining how consumers respond to the presentation of food, including several studies that directly examine issues regarding genetically-modified organisms, or GMOs, both the attitudes of consumers and also those of farmers responding to GMOs. There's a large and growing number of consumers that now stigmatize GMOs in the U.S. Consumers tend to lump foods that are labeled as having been genetically engineered, together with foods that are highly processed, infused with chemical preservatives, and factory-produced foods. Consumers associate GMOs primarily with some unquantifiable health risk, similar to that posed by untested or poorly-tested medicines or drugs. Consumers consider GMOs as a single technology with a single set of characteristics, rather than the thousands of differentiated modifications that now appear in the market. This misperception allows the consumers to regard the GMOs in caricature, each equally risky and none possessing any particular benefits to them. Generally, when consumers consider GMOs, they tend to regard them in comparison to some hypothetical alternative food that is pristine and presents no perceived health risk. In reality, the alternatives generally present a greater health risk and something that's quantifiable. More often, GMOs have been introduced specifically to eliminate the use of pesticides or other chemical preservatives or other treatments that do present a health risk. This is the case, for example, with BT corn, a product that consumers are most likely to encounter in the marketplace today. The industry is partly, if not wholly, to blame for the consumer misperception. Industry is focused understandably on marketing the benefits to farmers to get them to adopt. Consumers often have only a latent understanding of why genetic modifications are introduced into the food supply in the first place. Because consumers do not actively consider why these modifications have been introduced, they tend to ignore the health, nutrition, or other benefits that they have to offer. When given the choice between conventional foods and GMOs, consumers express a strong preference for conventional foods. However, when the same choice is presented in a way that the consumers can understand the reasons for the genetic modification, they overwhelmingly choose the GMOs. Thus, consumers would rather buy poultry that has been genetically modified to resist diseases than buying chicken, for example, that has been fed antibiotics in order to accomplish the same purpose. In fact, almost 85% prefer genetic modification in this case. Supporting studies find that consumers are enthusiastic about GMOs that have been introduced in order to enhance nutrition, safety, or health, but a little more skeptical of those introduced primarily to address agricultural productivity. When consumers are presented with direct explanations of the direct benefits to consumers, they are much more willing to accept the technology. Consumers have also failed to grasp the benefits to society as a whole. GMOs have been instrumental in increasing agricultural productivity. This technology has reduced the price of commodities by between four and 10%. Given our era of historically high crop prices, this technology is essential to providing low-cost food, particularly to developing countries. In developing countries, GMOs hold the promise to overcome generations of relatively low yields and high levels of disease. For example, genetically-modified corn in Africa has been used to reduce the incidence of esophageal cancer and birth defects. These developing countries have paid a very high price for consumer rejection of biotechnology in the European Union. These poor nations will face a further dwindling of fortunes if we fail to convince U.S. consumers of the benefits. Unfortunately, consumers often look on developing country adoption of GMOs as evidence of large U.S. corporations exploiting the poor. These corporations, despite wonderful cooperative efforts in developing countries, have failed to use their own goodwill efforts to connect with concerned constituencies in the U.S. and also Europe. If we are to turn the tide of irrational consumer fears regarding biotechnology, these firms must make a concerted effort to communicate the direct health benefits to consumers from reduced use of chemicals in food production, and the indirect benefits to developing-country consumers of more abundant and lower-cost food. It is easy to stigmatize genetic modification as a benefit only to large agribusinesses. It is much more difficult to stigmatize a variety of corn, for example, that is reducing the incidence of blindness in sub-Saharan Africa. Again, I'd like to thank the Subcommittee for inviting me to testify, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Just. We'll go in order where you're seated. Dr. Juma?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm very grateful to the committee for giving me the opportunity to come and testify here this morning. I had the opportunity in the past to serve as the executive secretary of the U.N. Convention on Biological Diversity, that was drafting laws that were intended specifically to govern and regulate genetically-modified products. And at the time, it was argued that these products were unlikely to have any benefits to consumers, they were likely to harm the environment, and they're only likely to benefit the industrialized countries. I've spent the last fifteen years or so since leaving that job basically building up a body of evidence of what has happened since then, and the evidence does not support those claims. Unfortunately, those early claims led to the introduction of a wide range of laws and restrictions around the world that have made it difficult, in fact, for consumers to benefit from the dramatic advances of agricultural biotechnology. This country has been a champion in leading the creation of the industry. It was because of a decision in this country to allow the patenting of living organisms that the industry, the biotechnology industry, was actually born. The lifespan of a patent is roughly twenty years. If it takes about twenty years to approve a product and get it to the market, that is really a major obstacle, and it is incentive to anybody who wants to invest in biotechnology. A good example of that is the case of transgenic salmon in this country, which has taken twenty years of regulatory effort. A patent lasts almost as long. So we do have really very significant barriers to the ability of the global community to benefit from biotechnology. But the evidence is very clear. We've seen the case of India, for example, and parts of Africa where biotechnology cotton has been adopted. Farm incomes have gone up by 50%. These farmers have been able to have additional revenue with which they have been able to afford food. So we see a direct impact of increases in biotechnology, adoption of biotechnology, increases in farm income, and food security. And so it's evident that sovereign leadership is really essential in ensuring that the global community can benefit from these advances. And there are really two areas that I think are very important. The first is public awareness, education of the public, so the public is fully informed about the benefits of biotechnology. At the moment, that space for public education, as has already been mentioned, is occupied by people who spend most of their time denigrating biotechnology. I think a lot more work needs to be done in that area. Secondly, the area of making it possible for biotechnology products to be approved in a timely manner is a very important aspect of ensuring that consumers can benefit from the product. So I would like to make a case that, in fact, sovereign leadership in this country particularly, which championed the creation of the industry, is critical to enabling the global community to benefit from biotechnology. Thank you very much for giving me the time, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Dr. Juma. We'll go next to Dr. Olga Bolden-Tiller, the assistant professor at Tuskegee University. Dr. Bolden-Tiller?
Thank you. And like the others, I'd like to thank you all for the invitation. As the associate professor at Tuskegee University and the chair for the Department of Agriculture, I'd like to share with you a little bit about why the utilization of technology feeding the world is an old idea. So in his thesis back in the late 1800s, George Washington Carver wrote in his thesis entitled Plants Is Modified by Man, "The day is not far distant when man will be able to use nature's tools that have been placed before him for a scientific basis, free of conjecture, which we're facing here today." At the time, the tools that Carver referred to were not biological tools, but the technology of his time were instead that of breeding, selection of varieties, budding and grafting. Carver noted that ever since science overthrew the idea of spontaneous generation and established beyond a doubt that no organism could be in existence without a parent's self, the scientific world had received a thunderbolt, which was to be the means of the first great awakening. He also suggested in his thesis that as the message was heralded from one to another, it aroused more careful investigation, stimulated advanced thought, and opened up a new line of possibilities respecting the whole plank kingdom. And this has led us to where we are today with biotechnology. And so the development of these biological tools. Technological tools and advances have been adopted in many fields. However, when polls for agricultural products, some hesitate, and this is disturbing. Even Carver noted back in his thesis that the chemist takes original elements and compounds, breaks them up, and then combines them into various portions to do what he needs to do for his purpose. Today, this would be new medications and the development of other products, such as with material science engineering. This is not said to attack those fields, but to draw parallels, as these sciences are working within the laws of nature to formulate these new derivatives. Similarly, biotechnology allows those in life sciences who work with plants and animals to do the same, as the laws of nature themselves are not being violated. We are simply utilizing the laws of nature with these new biological tools in order to create and propagate new varieties of existing products. In his thesis, Carver suggested this was the dawn of a new era, and that man was not simply to assist nature in producing endless varieties, but to be the actual progenitor of new creations. He went on to reference several scientists' work that had resulted in the development of novel and more robust crop varieties, similar to what we talk about today with biotechnology, through the uses of these new technological tools that have resulted in increases in yields. When we consider the benefits of biotechnology to society, we can focus on any single area of agriculture and identify the positive impacts of technology. For instance, to address the issue of poor nutrition in developing countries, a derivative of the sweet potato produced at Tuskegee University was shown to have increased protein content up to 500%. If consumed by individuals in areas where protein sources are scarce, these individuals will have at their fingertips a food source that can mean the difference between malnutrition and survival. When we consider food production here in the U.S., a developed nation, it is clear that food production requires many resources and labor to manage crops. Utilizing technology will allow us to do this in a very sustainable manner. With every great awakening, scientific or otherwise, questions will arise. Skeptics will ensue. However, it is critical that we as a society look at the facts, and the facts are these. The incorporation of GMO crops into operations in developing countries result in increased farm incomes and reduced labor associated with agricultural practices. This allows for more time for education and other avenues of income. It is predicted that food production must double within the next thirty years to meet the demands of the predicted population, and biotechnology provides scientists with answers to these things in a very affordable and sustainable way. The science is advancing. What is not advancing adequately is the communication and conversations about biotechnology with all components of our society. Creativity and resources must be increased to bring all members of the U.S. family along in terms of sharing in the benefits of these new technologies in order to improve our quality of life, not only here in the United States, but around the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bolden-Tiller. And lastly, I'd like to go to Mrs. Joanna Lidback.
Mr. Chairman, Ranking Member, and other members of the Subcommittee, thank you for inviting me here today. I am here on behalf of AgriMark Dairy Cooperative and the National Council of Farmer Co-ops. My husband and I have a small, forty-five-cow dairy located in northeast Vermont. We also make extra hay to sell. We raise Jersey steers to process and sell beef locally and market a small amount of compost and manure. We have two young boys, ages almost three and sixteen months. My husband and I are both proud to be first-generation dairy farmers. We believe in the science and the capability of biotechnology and its role in protecting the sustainability of our farm. Biotech crops are essential to feeding our cows and calves. We feed both GMO corn and soy products year-round, along with pasturing, and a grass-based silage. We feed both GMO corn and soy products year-round, along with pasturing, and a grass-based silage. GMOs are also key to our economic sustainability. For instance, in speaking with our dairy nutritionist earlier this week, he pointed out that the only non-GMO grain he could get us right now was organic. Our grain costs would go from $344 per tonne to $758. We use about 15 tonnes of grain per month. Over the course of the year, our costs would increase by nearly $75,000. I don't see how we could survive, let alone farm profitably, with those increased feed costs. Beyond GMOs, we utilize other products derived from biotechnology across our operation, from genomic testing of our Jersey cattle to the medicines, vaccines, and tests we use to keep our animals healthy. In the future, we're also considering growing our own corn and adding alfalfa to our mix. Given our location, we would need a shorter-day corn variety. Without genetic engineering, we would not have this opportunity, and economically, it would not make sense. I personally believe that there's room for many different styles of farming. I also believe that biotechnology plays a major role in our collective ability to not only feed a growing global population, but also to make individual improvements on our own farms. As a mother and as a consumer, I do not purchase organic or non-GMO food in the store. I generally do not believe in paying a premium for foods that provide no added nutritional, health, or environmental benefits. I feel secure in the steps taken to ensure the safety of the food I give my two growing boys. So you must be aware that recently, my state of Vermont passed a mandatory GMO labeling law. However, it's important to note that consumers do currently have choices in the grocery store aisle, whether it's the certified organic label or a voluntary non-GMO label. As my fellow panelists can and have attested, the science shows that GMOs are safe and bring tremendous benefits to farmers, consumers, and the environment. But we in agriculture have failed to connect with the public, and this has allowed misinformation to spread. Related to that debate, I recently wrote to the editor of my local paper and posted it on my blog, farmlifelove.com. It was responding to an organic farmer's letter that berated conventional farmers and their use of GMOs. I was more nervous about the possible backlash from my local community than about anything I'd ever posted on my blog. It turned out I had no reason to be. I found support, good questions, and many thank yous for speaking up. I'm happy to continue to speak up for our right to farm in whatever we choose, which in our case includes biotechnology and the use of GMOs. It's important to share my knowledge about the opportunities and challenges we face as modern-day farmers and as modern-day parents. When I have one person or 10 people reach out to me for a question or appreciating my hands-on and practical perspective from the farm, then I've succeeded. We know more now than we ever have about growing food and caring for animals, and this helps us to achieve a level of productivity and sustainability that previous generations of farmers would envy. All of this leads to lower food costs for the consumer. I'm proud of how far the American farmer has come, just as I'm proud of how far we have come on our own farm. If my sons choose to continue in farming, I want to know that my husband and I have provided them with a firm foundation to build on. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here today and to share my experience with biotechnology. I look forward to answering any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lidback. As a parent, I can understand your emotion. The chair is going to move to the question and answer period now, and the chair would like to remind members that they will be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in the order of arrival, and I appreciate the members' understanding. I'm going to start with a quick question for Dr. Just. While this is not intended to be a hearing about regulatory policy, it's important for us to understand the impact of government regulation on our ability to innovate. Can you talk about the cost of various regulatory interventions, such as the trend of states to impose labeling mandates?
So when we impose labeling mandates or things along those lines, it creates a really complex issue for the companies that are producing these innovations. First off, because they have to respond to how consumers are going to perceive those labels. But beyond those labels, it also creates this level of uncertainty as to whether the government will even be allowing the types of innovations they're going to make to be marketed once they get to the other end. And firms are risk averse, just like everyone else. And when they have that uncertainty, it's going to lead them on the margin to not invest in some of these innovations that they worry are going to be regulated out of usefulness in one way or another. So we definitely would see a dampening of innovation when we have that policy uncertainty. I think we already are seeing that sort of dampening of innovation, not just by firms, but also within the university.
Well, Dr. Just, do you think consumers perceive the government mandated labels as somewhat of warning labels?
Absolutely. Well, it depends a little bit on what these labels look like. If we were talking a front-of-pack label that says "contains genetically-modified organisms" or something that has a whole bunch of large words that are difficult for them to understand, it's a warning label. It's something that says, "This is dangerous, and you want to stay away from it." If it's, you know, in the list of ingredients right along with water on the back of the pack, they won't ever notice it.
Well, I've got one last question for you during this round. And we understand the nature of scientific research and appreciate the credibility that researchers bring to their work. Activists tend to demonize research if the data doesn't support their own agenda. Likewise, they attempt to discredit the researcher, particularly if the funding comes from a source that they find objectionable. Can you talk about the professional code of ethics you adhere to within the academic community?
Sure. I can speak to this in general. Each research university, we are forced by contract to disclose all of our funding sources to our university each year, where a third party goes through and determines if there are conflicts of interest. And in addition, every time we publish a paper, we have to talk about where that funding came from. And if it were to come out that somebody had lied or hidden that sort of funding, it would be extremely embarrassing, and the study most likely would be withdrawn from publication. I think it's clear that when we read these journals, that we can trust at least where that source of funding comes from. That said, in every instance I'm aware, when a faculty member who is into research is signing a contract to do consulting work for a major firm, they include in there that they have to be able to publish everything, including those things that that firm may disagree with, with the firm getting informed about what that is ahead of time so they can have time to react. I think everybody who is an honest researcher would have to put that into that contract, otherwise they just wouldn't be willing to sign. But in any case, published research, I think, is fairly trustworthy, and we can at least look at where that funding source came from and judge based on that funding source whether we believe it's in one way biased or not.
Well, thank you very much for your responses, Dr. Just. I now recognize the gentleman from Oregon, the ranking member, Mr. Schrader, who I want to let the panel know is a graduate of the University of Illinois Veterinary School of Medicine, which happens to sit in my district, so I'd like to tout that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Also undergraduate of Cornell University, so got around this great country well before my stint here in Congress. I guess I'd start with Dr. Juma. You indicated in your opening remarks that, you know, previous life with work you had done with a group of folks in the agency, there was some expectations that genetically-modified produce or crops or organisms would have some real serious deleterious effects environmentally, health-wise, et cetera. And you've indicated, I guess in the testimony, that that has not been proven to be the case. And yet, it would seem that a lot of the rhetoric we're hearing that would be against hybrid or genetically-modified improvements to crops still persists. Do you think the original prejudices still hold sway, or has there been some new evidence to indicate there's unsafe or unhealthy problems with these genetically-modified crops?
Thank you very much for that question. The evidence does not support those claims. The balance of the evidence, which is the studies that have been done that summarize all the previous studies that exist, have come to the conclusion that the risks associated with genetically-modified products are similar to those associated with conventional products. That's the balance of evidence. That's both in the United States with the studies of the National Academy of Sciences. Similarly, the European Union has conducted similar studies, spending millions, up to 300 million euros over a 10-year period, reviewing the evidence and came to the same conclusions.
So, if I may interrupt, Mr. Juma, but so why does the EU still have their labeling? If they've come to the same conclusions, why have they not frankly informed their consumers that there is no difference?
The EU is not a homogeneous body. You have the Commission with its scientific advice that has conducted these studies. You have the legislative body that's influenced very much by the consumer organizations that has not changed its position. And then you have a third component, which is the continuation of reports that basically misinform the public, that are never challenged. In the case of scientific research, we disclose where our funding comes from. The opponents of the technology normally don't disclose where their funding comes from. So the standards that are used to guard against misinformation in the scientific community are not applied when it comes to those who oppose the technology. And it's been my view that, in fact, those who oppose the technology need to be held to the same standard of ethics being questioned publicly, in the same way our scientists get questioned publicly.
There is this call we have in this country by a group of folks that purport to be strong environmentally oriented and health-oriented for our consumers, that we should base our decisions on good science. And that is a concern I see with this, you know, unfortunate agenda, trying to demonize something not based on the science, but based on one's personal inclinations. Listening to you, it's obvious that while the science in the EU is incontrovertible about the health and safety benefits of genetically-modified hybrid crops, that because of politics, people are afraid to lead and inform consumers about what's really going on. Certainly, I think people should have all the information they need, but hopefully, it should be accurate information, peer-reviewed information, if I listen to you in particular, that, you know, should be the dominant theme, not just someone's theory taken off the Internet or from your next-door neighbor, or some preconceived notions that have since been proven false. Question to Dr. Tiller. You indicated in your testimony, a little bit like my opening remarks, that what we have here is some problems with the society and communication aspect of genetic modification not keeping up with the technology, and consumers not really aware. Could you elaborate on how, you know, we in Congress, or the industry, or grocery stores, or researchers, agriculturists should get the word out, not in a threatening or overbearing manner, but one based on hopefully giving people good information and make good decisions?
Indeed. I think it needs to be a holistic approach, and it doesn't need to be something that is just put here and there strategically, if you would. It should just be a part of everyday life, as many things are. Every day, we hear about new medications and how they're coming to fruition and things of that nature, but we don't hear that development piece when related to agricultural products. And I think that when we look at the best approach, we need to look at it in that vein. When we talk about medication and science in general, it starts from kindergarten on up. And I think that we need to incorporate and have an understanding from a youth on up, how it is food is produced, where it is our food comes from. Because a lot of questions that people have and a lot of hesitations that they have really is from a lack of knowledge in regard to where food actually comes from.
Very good. Thank you, and I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
The chair would like to recognize the gentleman from California, Mr. Lamoffa, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the panelists traveling, as they have had to today, to be here. You know, as you may know, I'm a farmer myself in California. We farm rice on our farm for our 83rd year. So, Mrs. Lidback, if this is your first generation, my congratulations to you getting started here. It was a common joke that, how do you make a small fortune farming? You start with a large one. But it's a good life, and we've done well, and I appreciate it. But Dr. Bolden-Tiller, you know, when we look at the different technology, different things we've done over the years, like, for example, my family would grow seed rice for other farmers' use, you know, the following year. And so we've improved in California for many years from maybe 40, 45, 100 weight per acre as a yield to, we're in the 90s now. And we've done it without GMO so far to this point. No California rice is GMO. But we've also used land leveling. We're using laser and now GPS-guided technology to level the land within 1/8 of an inch. So we're very frugal with water, as we face drought and more and more problems with our water supply as well. It enables us to use less materials to control weeds or other pests like that. So we've done a lot of things outside of the GMO process to maximize what we have. It seems like we're at the point where maybe we're about tapped out on new technologies or what have you to extract more grain from acre or in other crops as well. So if we're going to move forward, you know, with the goals of increasing food production, as the chairman and others mentioned, we're looking at a population of 9 billion in not that many years on this planet, where are we going to find the space to get more yield with available technologies? And we could, you know, several ways. You could increase acres. California's going to be tough due to water supply and many other things. There's certain avenues you could do. Increase the use of fertilizer, that may not be popular. What are we going to do to increase and meet the goals of the world's needs?
Well, I think that's what brings us here today. The beauty of biotechnology is that you can target specifically what areas need to be adjusted, and you can do it in a very refined way, such that you're addressing the specific needs. So if there's a drought issue, you can specifically target genes that will resist drought. And so you don't need more water, you don't need more land, you don't need any additional resources, and you can utilize the technology that we already have. And I think that's why we're here today, to discuss and help people understand that in order for us to move forward when we're running out of land. I mean, you speak of rice. I was in India a couple of years ago, and they are tapped out with regard to land, and they have one of the largest populations increasing. And although they can go higher with buildings in terms of housing people, there's no more land that they can really tap into in order to grow more food. And so we have to look at, how can we more efficiently use the land that we have and the other resources that we have? And biotechnology will definitely allow us to do this by specifically targeting the issues at hand. And the beauty of it is that as we understand the genomes of the different plants and what have you, we can target them specifically for regions. So if you have a water issue in California, but you have a drought issue in Florida, well, you can target varieties to be developed specifically for those regions, so that we can more efficiently utilize our resources broadly.
Thank you. Dr. Just, for example, again, when we talk about food supplies already being fairly tight or, you know, under-nourishment in especially third-world countries, et cetera, we've heard with biotechnology that you can actually increase the nutrient value per unit of grain or whatever it is. Would you talk about that a little bit and what that could mean for, you know, as children around the world are dealing with not enough? And, you know, we can even look at our own border situation in this country right here, what's happening right now. What will we be doing with this biotechnology to increase what we have per child, per unit of food they're getting?
Sure. And actually, the problem is addressed in several different ways by this technology. First, there is the ability to change the types of crops that are being grown in third-world countries to enrich them with the particular proteins or other vitamins that they may be specifically lacking. And that's going to reduce disease, that's going to prevent starvation and malnutrition, and a lot of the other sorts of diseases that go along with that. But in addition, we can also broaden the types of land that can be used agriculturally by allowing... by allowing better tolerance for drought or wet conditions. And even just having higher production here in the United States lowers the prices so that we end up having more freely available foods elsewhere. I can't imagine exactly what things would have looked like during the food riots from the price spikes of the last several years if we hadn't had biotechnology. That really did make something that looked a lot like Dust Bowl in terms of climate, almost negligible in terms of yields.
Well, let's not lower the prices too much, though, okay? Got to stay in the black. We've got to get this farm program behind us here. So thank you. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lamalfa. Chair, we'd like to recognize the gentle lady from Washington, Ms. Del Benny, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to all of you for being here. You know, in my home state of Washington, we had an initiative on the ballot in 2012 regarding GMO labeling, Initiative 522. It did not pass, but it definitely started a big conversation in our state and raised a lot of questions. It's a complicated issue, and so I think people are confused and still looking for answers to questions. And I think this will be an ongoing conversation in our state, and I'm sure across our country and around the world. I started my career in biotechnology on the life sciences side, and definitely agree with comments that Mr. Schrader made, that we need to use the best science available as we put together policy, and put together policy that gives us and our communities' consumers and producers the best results. And in that regard, Dr. Just, you were talking about some of the confusion around biotechnology, and that people kind of lump everything together into one category as a GMO. Do you have ideas of how this can be better explained, and maybe what types of, different types of modifications there are out there, and how we talk about them?
So, to begin with, just even using sort of long scientific-sounding words, make it sound like it's been grown in a test tube, and people get scared of it. But talking about the individual modifications, and not even talking about them in terms of modifications, but corn that allows you to reduce pesticide use, right? Or technology in terms of the actual benefit. When we start talking about those benefits, people change their minds. They recognize this is science used in their interest, not for some nefarious purpose that they don't quite understand. And I think changing the debate to be about those specific technologies, and the specific modifications, and the reasons for those modifications, really does change people's minds. It makes it much harder to argue that this is something that we need to be afraid of, and need to make sure every consumer is aware of or notified of.
Given the breadth, how do you think you practically go about doing that?
I really think putting a human face on it is the first best option, is picking out the few technologies that have had some real significant health impacts, such as golden rice that's been mentioned, or some of these modifications that are addressing diseases in Africa and other places where they face malnutrition. Talking just about a very few specifics can change the conversation.
Thank you. Dr. Yuma, you were talking a little bit about the EU and some of the challenges there. Are there both positives and negatives we can learn from how other countries have addressed this issue that could help advise us as we move forward here in the United States?
Yeah, thank you very much for that question. I think one place to watch closely is the United Kingdom, which I joined the European Union in following the same standards that were hostile towards biotechnology. And as they have started to develop their own biotech products, they realized that the laws that they put in place were undermining their own industries. And there's been a review in the UK Parliament, not only to change the laws, but to call on the European Union to change the way it regulates biotechnology. And I think this process of revisiting the rules in light of advances in science and technology is something that needs to be done fairly regularly. Because the techniques that are in place right now, which are very precise methods of editing the genes, are making the process of genetic modification look very much like conventional plant breeding, and even safer than conventional plant breeding, because we're becoming more precise about it. And therefore, the rules need to reflect that reality. And so this continuous review of the rules, including the duration of FDA approval, needs to be revisited in light of advances in technology.
Thank you. Mrs. Lidback, when you talk to your customers, do you get questions? What types of questions do you get? And how's that conversation gone in terms of helping folks understand how you farm versus how others might farm?
Thank you. Great question, actually. I just went through this with one of my Jersey beef customers, who's very skeptical of GMOs and of Monsanto in particular. And we had a great conversation. And I just shared with her that I didn't think that she could believe everything she read on the Internet. She said, "Oh, no, no, I watched a movie about it." And I said, "Great, but let's watch more movies, and let's keep talking about it." And the tricky part is, every myth that's been put out there about GMOs can be debunked or disproven, so far that I've encountered. And when you start sharing information like that, I think as long as the other person has an open mind and is willing to hear you, then you're able to accomplish something. But you're affecting what they believe. This is their belief system. It's part of how they've operated, or they've started operating, if you will. And I hadn't heard from her for a couple of weeks. I thought, "Oh, my gosh, maybe I lost her as a customer." But then, sure enough, she just called this past weekend, just great timing, really, and got another order of Jersey beef. And so I didn't scare her away, and we opened the doors to discussion. And I think we're going somewhere with that. And I'd like to think that she trusts me, certainly, and she trusts that I would make good decisions for our farm and the way we do things. So we just need to be better communicators about what's going on, and what we do and what we use every day.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I yield back.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to recognize another veterinarian, my colleague from the great state of Florida, Mr. Yoho, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And I do have a background in food animal production for the last 30 years, and equine medicine, and on inclement days, I'd work on dogs and cats in the clinic, as I'm sure you did, Kurt. I come from an area in north-central Florida. I live in a county called Alachua County, and in a small town called the Town of Alachue, we have the Sid Martin Biotech Center. It's an incubator. It's been the Biotech Incubator of the Year in 2013 for the research they've done. Cutting-edge technology. One of the companies, Pastoria, has taken a genetically-modified bacteria, placed it on soybeans, and it produces a nemicide, so it decreases the amount of herbicides or nemicides that we have to spread in a field. And it's cutting-edge technology. It's going to be better for the environment, will increase crop yield. And when you look at Dr. Borlaug back in the 60s with the research that he's done, and the motto that he has that has been tagged with him, "The man who saved a billion lives", and that was in the 60s. And if we look today, how many lives do you think have been saved by the genetically-modified wheat that he has produced? Anybody want to guess? It's into billions. But yet, there's this attack on the GMOs, and I think as the other members have brought up, we in the scientific community, you in the ag community, and I commend you for, number one, starting, number two, educating your clients, and you three researchers, it's our duty to educate the public, the media in particular, because they run with stories, and make sure that the research is scientifically, peer-reviewed articles, and that we can prove what we're saying, and we can back it up. Because billions of lives have been saved by genetically-modified wheat, corn, rice, other products, but yet, nobody can come out and give us a definitive diagnosis of how many people have died from that. And so it's our duty as members of Congress, people in ag communities, and researchers to educate the people out there. And so my question is, could anyone give their... One of the other things that has come up, too, for example, in the 1990s, it took the US government about six months, on average, to bring a new ag biotech product to market. As of 2013, the average was 30 months, with some products taking nearly 45 months. And so these researchers, these companies, are going through just a mountain of regulations, and more testing, and more testing. And I understand we want to be safe with the product that we bring to market. But it's getting to the point where it's crippling our market, it's crippling the innovation in America, and companies are leaving here. Whereas in Europe, they can get these done a lot quicker, which is, you think they would be more restrictive than we are. Can you give your thoughts on why this is happening? We'll start with you, Dr. Just.
So I can't speak to specifics about why it's happening, but I do believe there is this growing worry about biotechnology in general, and it's leading to this additional scrutiny.
Who's leading that charge? Is it the scientific community, or is it the outside groups?
No, it's outside groups. It's activists that are outside of the academic community, that are misinformed and don't understand the science that's behind it.
Dr. Yuma, what's your opinion?
I think there's a certain degree of hesitation on the part of political leadership, not to do something, to take decisions that they think their voters might not support. And as the voices against biotech increases, leadership becomes less and less willing to take tough decisions. And I think the case of transgenic salmon in this country is a very good example of that.
You know, you hit on a very important part, because if politicians aren't going to back the research, that's why it's so important on a committee like this, the Ag Committee, especially with biotech, that we have the information, and we go out and talk with an authoritative voice, and educate our members so that they can carry that back. And I appreciate you bringing that up. Another question I have, can the US consumers with all the hunger and health problems we currently face afford an unpredictable regulatory system driving by anti-modern ag products in the public interest groups? I mean, we just can't afford that, can we? I mean, would you agree? Anybody want to comment on that?
I would agree. I would definitely agree. I think that what we're hearing today is that there are a lot of great things out there. I mean, for example, peanuts. What if we had a peanut that people could consume that have a peanut allergy? I mean, when you have a kid who has a peanut allergy, it affects all the rest of the kids that they go to school with, or they're in daycare with. You can't bring any peanut products, or whatever the case may be. So I think, again, it comes to communicating what the benefits are specifically, and getting the message out there. And again, I think so far, we've done a poor job of that, and so that's why we're here today, to get the word out, get the message out.
I'm out of time, but I want to thank you for coming up here, and that's what we are here for, to educate the public. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Yoho. We're going to do another round of questions, and I'm going to recognize the ranking member, Mr. Schrader, for five minutes.
Interesting topic. And again, I think the gist of the panel's remarks are, we need more education. So in that spirit, I guess, Dr. Yuma, what is the current regulatory status of golden bananas and golden rice? How much of this is getting into consumers' hands?
In the Philippines with the golden rice, there's a law in place that would allow the country to approve it. But there's a fierce opposition, which is not just domestic, but international, that is putting pressure on the government of the Philippines not to move on the approval. In Uganda, where there is a serious problem with the bananas, it's a staple for Uganda, a low content of vitamin A. Ugandan scientists have developed a variety that is rich in vitamin A, golden bananas. They have a different problem there. The activists won't let the parliament approve a law that would allow the government to determine whether to release the product or not. So we have two situations where there's a law, opponents won't allow the government to use that law. Then you have another case where there is no law. The government has been trying for 10 years to put in place a law, and every time it comes to parliament, opponents, both international and local opponents, come and kill the law. So in both cases, it's basically opposition that's depriving the public of the benefits of biotechnology.
Thank you. Yeah. So misinformation and weak politicians conspiring to misinform and frankly harm consumers and people that really are in desperate need of increased nutrition, I think, at the end of the day. Dr. Just, what are the ill effects of GMO-produced products? What health hazards are we facing now because stuff's been GMO-made?
I am aware of no specific health harms from GMO products. It's certainly possible to produce genetically-modified foods that would be harmful, but it's possible to produce any sort of thing that might be harmful. It's a bit like complaining about a tool, like a wrench, rather than the actual food itself. It's just a tool to create that modification. We could obtain the same modifications by using traditional means and crossing our fingers and hoping it happens. It's just a much more efficient means. But it doesn't present any specific health harm.
Thank you. But Dr. Yuma, would you agree with that?
I would agree with that, and I would go further and say that in many cases, not using biotechnology carries more risks than using it. If you take the environmental area, for example, if we didn't use biotechnology techniques, we would need additional land, which is close to twice the size of Texas, to grow the food that we grow today. So if we took away biotechnology, we would have greater risks. So my claim would be that not using it carries more risks than using it.
Following up on that, I remember you have a little gray hair, sort of like me, that back in the 60s, 70s, there were a lot of predictions that we're going to have world hunger, because there's not enough arable land to feed the world. Why didn't that come true? Is that just bad science, or what happened between then and now that changed that paradigm?
I think that most predictions underestimated two things. One is the potential advances in technology to address those problems. And secondly, human creativity.
Both of which are sort of on trial these days, it would appear. I appreciate that. Dr. Tiller, would you agree? What are the bad ill effects that you've seen or studied when you read the scientific journals with GMO crops?
Well, looking in the literature, as well as working with scientists, we have not seen any, as a matter of fact. And what we have found is that individuals who, once they understand the science behind it, they are very receptive to the use of GMO products.
Dr. Just, if there's a... If you're, for whatever reason, it does sound like there's a very valid reason, but people have their own opinions, I get that, and it's a great country. If you don't like GMO produce, or crop, or seed, isn't it true you can just buy something, you go organic, develop organic? Isn't organic a different way to go, if that's your concern?
Certainly. Organics are available, and they are GMO-free, and so people could always choose to go a different direction.
So why do we need a whole nother labeling deal, or whatever, if we already have organic?
I don't know specifically that we do. I really worry that the labeling does more harm than good, that it leads too many people away from it, and it diminishes the market for GMOs that are the solution to a lot of the problems we face.
I'll just make a final comment, Mr. Chair. You've been very indulgent here. I'm really, besides the misinformation that this whole discussion would lead to, I'm very worried about how it divides the agricultural community. As a farmer, as a veterinarian, frankly, if people live and work the land, provide the safest health, food, and fiber in the world, Ms. Lidback's one of them, we're a small group. We're less than 3% of the population of this great country, but we feed not only ourselves, but most of the world. And there's a variety of ways to go about that. Organic, I think, is a very valid way to go. I'm a proud organic farmer. I think that's great. There are people that are sensitive to different chemicals, not to gene changes, but to other things that we see out there, and serves a legitimate purpose. People want to know different things, and that organic works. People want to know different things, and that organic works great. And as an organic producer, back when it wasn't popular to be organic, I remember being demonized by my friends in conventional agriculture on occasion. And I just hope we sit back and remember, and say, well, I'm not going to do the same thing now to my friends in conventional agriculture, because they serve a purpose, and the opportunity to feed people in different countries, different parts of our great country, where the weather is not so conducive to certain growth of certain, you know, beneficial crops with high nutrition value, that we don't start demonizing one another. We have one agriculture, in my opinion, in this great country. We ought to stick together to provide an intelligent message about the benefits. I think Dr. Tiller's right on target when she says, we need to communicate more with the consumer all along the way about the great advances, the positive advances. Frankly, if you get that stuff out early, we can get our pushback earlier, hopefully allay concerns, or address real, genuine concerns along the production cycle. And, you know, frankly, as, again, a man made my living off the land, I bear some responsibility for that. But I assure Dr. Juma, I'm not going to be one of those politicians that sits back and is afraid to hopefully bring the message to the folks in the 5th Congressional District of Oregon that are very interested in the GM debate. But I hope to have a more informed debate. I guess we'll find out come November 2nd. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let the record show that the GMO debate is not the General Motors debate today. I'd like to recognize, for another round of questions, my colleague from Florida, Mr. Yoho, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, the GMOs in my area, in north-central Florida, we've got kind of a sandy loam-type soil. And when I graduated from vet school in 1983, we produced roughly 50 to 75 bushels per acre of corn. Today, we're pushing 300 bushels to an acre. And that's through the genetic modification of drought resistance, pest resistance, and I don't think anybody can argue with that. And of course, that drives down feed price to cattle, as you brought up. You know, if we didn't have that, our price for our livestock feed would be way up, and then it would just change the whole dynamics. Dr. Just, I wanted to ask you, because you've done a lot of research on marketing and consumer sentiment on this, what has your research shown that would be the increased cost of, say, a sack of wheat versus, say, a variety of, you know, with an old variety of wheat? Do you have any idea on that?
So the increased cost?
Yeah, like if you had the GMO wheat that's producing 70% more yield versus an old one, would it be 70% difference?
So there are a lot of different ways that this could impact the market, but if we were to talk about just eliminating GMOs altogether, the estimates, the best estimates that are out there, that we have something along the lines of a 10% increase in commodity prices across the board. But that's different depending on which commodities. Where it's been much more prevalent, it'd be much larger than that.
I agree. I mean, I would think it would be a huge. What about, what has your research shown, consumers, what will they tolerate, or when it comes to labeling GMO, what is the biggest drawback? Is it the ignorance of what the product is, just from a lack of education?
So it is ignorance of the product, and it's a general skepticism of anything they eat that is too, you know, processed, or, you know, treated in some way that they don't quite understand. You get the same reactions that you do if you have them read the ingredient list with all the words that they don't quite understand. It's just a general stigma and a general pushback. And frankly, it's because they don't understand the alternatives that they are facing. They don't recognize that a lot of those contain things that are much more dangerous, but aren't genetically modified.
Yeah, we need to remind them that yogurt is a genetically engineered, modified product. I think beer is too, right? Did you say that there was an agreeable cost savings, that people would consume GMOs? Was it, what was that cost?
So there have been several different studies done along these lines, and for most consumers, it's something around 25% of a discount that they, you know, they start to switch and be willing to take on GMOs when they have that label.
I can just see them. I don't like this product, it's bad for you, but man, if I can save 25%, we're going to consume it. We had a veterinarian that taught us animal health, and if a cow died, people would call them up, and the farmer would always say, my cow died, can I feed it to my wife and kids? And he'd say, well, yeah, you can, but they're going to die. And he says, okay, anyways, I get off the subject. What trade barriers have you seen with other countries with our GMOs?
So GMOs are sort of a soft trade barrier, where you have required labeling in places and other sorts of barriers like that. And what it does, it's cutting off markets where it's not possible to grow traditional crops in volume, right? So in places where we do have traditionally poor agriculture and don't have high yields, they can't, they can't access Europe unless they use the traditional crops that don't have the high yields. It's a, it's a trade barrier, but it's put in place in a way that's acceptable internationally.
I appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for indulging me.
Thankfully, the gentleman's time has expired. Thank you for not letting me come to your veterinary practice. But it is a privilege to have each and every one of you here, and as the today's temporary chairman, I get the opportunity to end this hearing. But before so, I wanted everybody to have a chance to ask their questions before I got to a few more. And I will tell you, I appreciate you bringing up the, another product that could be genetic, could be considered genetically modified, and you mentioned beer. And my staff over there is going, what is he going to say right now? But I did some research, it wasn't peer-reviewed, Dr. Just. After three 4th of July parades, I stopped by a store in Decatur, Illinois, and I was getting a six-pack of that adult beverage product that Mr. Yoho mentioned. And the young man who was helping me mentioned to me that he had read a story, that the product I was buying was bad for you, because it was carcinogenic, because it included GMO corn in that beer. And I ironically had read the same story that has been going around the internet about different types of beer that are carcinogenic, and I wanted to remind the young man that he actually had number one and number two mixed up. Number one was carcinogenic because of a so-called caramel coloring product. Number two was supposed to be carcinogenic because it could include genetically modified corn. And this goes back to the labeling issue we talked about earlier, Dr. Just, that even without labeling, what is out there, what is being placed out to the American consumer about GMO products gives the warning to individuals like this young man, and others like me, who don't have an agriculture background, who could take this information and make judgments that are just not based on science and fact. And that is the purpose of this hearing today. Even with that limited research, you know, I got to see, I got to see it in action, and that's what we're trying to address with this hearing. And in Decatur, Illinois, I'm proud that one of my constituents is Howard Buffett. And I would urge each and every one of you to read his book called Forty Chances. It's one of the last books that I've read, and I didn't read it just because he was my constituent, but it is a great view of how agriculture impacts the rest of the world, and how global agriculture is. I come from central Illinois. I mean, we have some of the priciest, but most fertile farmland in America. And I often say that we feed the world, and it's underappreciated. And our agricultural sectors, we've seen from each and everyone, and heard from each and every one of you today, is being impacted by the zealousness to go after genetically modified seeds and genetically modified foods that include these products, when they're perfectly safe and they're helping to feed the world. Now, Howard, my friend, he believes that biotech's a part of the solution to solving world hunger. I can remember sitting in Decatur, Illinois, at Milliken University 25, 26, 27 years ago, I don't remember which year it was there, but I got to listen to Dr. Paul Ehrlich tell us that in the next 20 years, the world was going to have a starvation problem. Well, I'd like to think Dr. Ehrlich was, the starvation problem still exists, but not nearly to the extent, because of what he considered the population explosion, not nearly to the extent that we had, that he led us to believe, because of human interaction, development, biotechnology. And I would urge you to continue to, to work in that direction. But let me get back to Mr. Buffett. He was in Winnipeg for the World Congress on Conservation Agriculture just a few months ago, and even hinted that debating the merit of GMO crops is actually a step in the wrong direction. I want to read you a quote from the Manitoba Cooperator. Howard said, I think we just have to be inclusive and understand that there's a place for everything, and that if we can get those things in the appropriate places at the appropriate use, then we're going to have a lot of wins. He said that, adding that he believes even debating the merit of genetically modified crops is a step in the wrong direction. Quote, "If all we're going to do is spend our time debating what's good and bad, and alienate everybody, and pick sides, we're going to lose a lot more than we're going to win," end quote. And I have a question. I'm going to start, each of you feel free to answer this question, but I'm going to start with Mrs. Lidback. In your view, how do you think we can achieve consensus on this issue, so that we can focus on results in feeding hungry people? Or as my constituent Howard Buffett puts it, how can we achieve more wins?
Great question. I think you've heard it a lot today. I think we need to do a better job of communicating the specific benefits that we get from biotechnology. There's a lot more benefits that we have from other types of biotechnology on our farm that I didn't quite go into detail today. But I think about how it affects the animal welfare of the cows that we have, and how we keep them healthy, and we're able to keep them healthy, or we're able to treat them right away when they get sick. In so doing, in so communicating those efforts that we had, that we've made, on my blog or in my social media outlets, I think that I get, we get more believers. We get people who trust me, who trust what we're doing on our farm, and then maybe when they're looking at other products or other areas of biotech, aren't quite so scared. Because I think the big issue is people are afraid of what they don't know. And so to get the information out there is key, I think, to achieving more wins. I mean, people talk about they have the right to know, and that's why they need a label, a mandatory label on GMO products. Information's already out there. They don't need to wait for a label. They can go and do their own research and find it. So that's what I would say. Because at the end of the day, like Mr. Schrader said, we're all farmers, we're all doing the best that we can, and in the best way that we know how to do it. And it's all about producing a quality product, nutritious product, for our consumers.
Thank you. Dr. Bolden-Tiller?
Yes, I'd like to just chime in. As you indicated, I think it's communication, a very perfect example. I'm just, about a week or so ago, we had some individuals from our community, Tuskegee University's a big name, but it's in a very small town. And because of that, the individuals in the community are our neighbors, and by us, I mean the people at the university, they are our neighbors, our friends, members of our churches. And so they felt very comfortable going to our dean and saying, well, Dr. Hill, who's accompanying me today, we would like to have a frank conversation with you about, you know, genetically modified organisms and what have you. And so some of us got with them, and there was just a frank conversation. And it was very clear to us after that conversation that they were open to understanding, but they had not had or utilized us as a resource previously. And a lot of their misconceptions had nothing to do with the technology itself, but some of the names of companies or what have you, as you indicated for your consumer, associated with the science. So it was not even the science itself that they had any issue with. But once we were able to talk to them about the science, and even invite them onto our campus to take part in a workshop, so that they can actually do some hands-on work in biotechnology, they're very open to it, very appreciative of it. And I think that that's really what we need to do more of.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bolden-Tiller. Anybody else? You're welcome, or we can move on to another one.
Yeah, I think that a better understanding, a better science-based understanding of the risks and benefits of the products could help us to move towards a regime of coexistence, so that the two products could coexist. We've had this story in this country with margarine, where it's 60 years of laws, state laws restricting, imposing labeling on margarine. I don't think this country wants to go the route that it went with the war between butter and margarine. I think that today we have coexistence between the two products. I think the lessons from that case could inform how we could approach the GM debate.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next question, and I will start with Dr. Bolden-Tiller. How, in your view, does the US compete with other countries when it comes to biotech research and development of biotech products?
Can you repeat?
Yeah, how, in your view, how does the US compete with other countries when it comes to our biotech research and development of biotech products? Just in a global competitiveness type of request.
I think that we would compete very well. I think that we can look at the United States as being at the forefront, just because of our government, and our scientists, and our academic freedom. We've had the opportunity to move forward on some things. When I look at our interaction with other countries, we do quite a bit of work in West Africa, and to work with scientists in those areas who don't have the freedom just to explore some of these technologies, and we have that. And so I think that that has put us in the forefront.
Anybody else?
There are 28 countries that grow genetically modified foods. And I think those countries provide a very interesting basis for a trade arrangement in GM products. They can trade among themselves, and I think that's what's going to generate pressure on countries that don't want to participate in the GM revolution, to actually become players, if they see that there's 26 that are providing leadership, which is largest section of the global community anyway. I think there's a basis there for new trade arrangements.
So 26 countries are, 28 countries are using GMO products that they're exporting?
On a commercial basis.
On a commercial...
And the numbers are going up, and most of the new players that are coming along are from developing, going to be from developing countries. So it puts the United States in a position to really play a new role in a new field of international trade.
It could be a job creator here in this country.
Absolutely.
All right, yeah. That actually leads me to my next question. I was going to start...
Do you mind if I make a comment on this?
Yeah, because you just ruined my transition. No, go ahead, Dr. Just, I'm kidding.
This is an important point, I hope. So we are well-placed to be a leader, and we do have a comparative advantage, given our university research structure and the freedoms that we enjoy. At the same time, I had a conversation just two days ago with a colleague who is a, you know, someone who works in biotech and developing new technologies, and they lament that a lot of, a lot of the research is disappearing at the universities because of the public pushback, and it's pushing a lot of that research back into the corporations, into the Monsanto's. And that means we're not making a lot of the innovations we should otherwise. So this pushback is not just a problem in terms of production, but also the innovation.
No, that's a great point, and thank you for interrupting me. Hey, actually, I do want to get back, because I had another question, and this is my last question, unless you guys say something that allows me to ask for more. But my good friend, Mr. Buffett, actually has done a great deal of work in the African continent. And you mentioned developing countries, Dr. Juma, and you talk about 28 countries exporting GMO foods, GMO seed-produced foods. What can we do to address the hunger in countries, especially in the African continent that Howard is focused on? What can we do in addressing those hunger needs with genetically modified seeds? those hunger needs with genetically modified seeds for the new users of those products in developing nations that could eventually become export, exporters of agricultural products rather than just consumers? So, can you tell me, you know, how biotech is going to be used as a valued tool to help developing nations not only feed their own population but also to possibly grow economically?
Yeah, thank you. The main challenge, particularly for African countries, is the weak capacity in universities to conduct biotech research. And this creates a very unique opportunity for collaboration between U.S. and African universities. That collaboration could then lead to investment in research in additional products, additional agricultural crops. There are hundreds of indigenous African crops that are not currently consumed widely that could become part of the global food basket. But conducting that research, particularly with the use of biotechnology tools, would require a closer collaboration between African and American universities.
Thank you. Dr. Just, I'll go ahead and go to you next.
So, certainly, we need to have that sort of collaboration with the U.S. university system, as well, developing varieties specifically for the production conditions within Africa or within other developing countries is a huge boon to these potential trading partners. The big problem they face right now is that there are so many economies that are relatively closed or closed to GMOs, and it makes it very difficult for them to take advantage of these innovations in the way that could alleviate poverty there. There's a colleague of mine at Yale who essentially says Europe has blood on its hands for the way they've treated GMOs and the impact that it's had specifically on Africa.
Well, thank you. Dr. Bolden tiller, Mrs. Lidback, feel free to offer any comments too.
Yes, at Tuskegee University, we have a number of our professors who are from some of these African countries. And so, they do have inroads to working with some of the sciences there. And one of the things that we are very proud of is our collaborations with them and the scientists there, as well as some of the legislatures, is just to help give them an opportunity to understand the sciences. And what we've found, in particular biotechnology, and what we have found is that instead of us having to change their mind, instead of them depending solely on the naysayers from Europe and where have you, instead, they are making their own decisions about their food choices. And in Ghana, for instance, they were able to pass some of the biosafety regulations, allowing them to do field studies with some genetically modified organism.
Thank you. Mrs. Lidback?
Mr. Chairman, well, I was just sitting here thinking about your original question. I hope you don't mind if I add a little bit more.
Go ahead.
Yes, how we could better communicate, you know, the benefits and sort of get past debating about, you know, whether, you know, the science is good or not, or whatever the case may be. And just thinking, I mean, I think Dr. Just brought it up earlier. If we have a label that specifically conveys what benefit of whatever GMO product or tool was used in that food product, in that ingredient list, conveys the benefit of it, a voluntary label, that would be a way to convey the information. I'm worried about a piecemeal approach. I mentioned I'm from the state of Vermont. We just have a mandatory labeling law passed in our state. And I'm worried that it's going to affect, consumers in Vermont won't be able to get as many products available to them, small businesses in Vermont, food-related businesses in Vermont, won't be able to have the freedom that other companies have outside of the state of Vermont that don't have to adhere to the label. So, if there was a voluntary effort by a company to show the benefits of whatever the GM product or the GM process was that was used in the making of the food product, I think that might actually be a positive way to approach and to get past the debate and to not be afraid of what, and not to perpetuate fear of how the food was made and processed.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And, Dr. Yuma?
Can I say something that won't provoke you to ask more questions?
Sure. I reserve the right to go ahead and ask. But yes, feel free.
I just wanted to add, in terms of the U.S. competitiveness?
Yes.
That so far, we've been focusing almost entirely on crops. There's a real potential in expanding biotechnology to livestock that would expand really the capacity of this country to engage and compete internationally, a lot more than it's doing at the moment.
Very good point, and I will save you from another question, too. I do want to actually revert back to something you said earlier, sir, a couple things. And you talked about the weak research and development at institutions of higher learning in the African continent as helping to hold back some of the opportunity that those developing nations could have in developing more products and developing their economy. I would also argue that it's also due to some political instability and weak governments in these countries to actually set up the institutions that are necessary. And you said something earlier that I know Ranking Member Schrader mentioned. It was about political courage and political will. Now, we stand, we are sitting here today at this hearing to talk about the benefits of GMO products. And I would not be surprised if the Ranking Member Schrader and I have already been vilified in social media for even having the audacity to talk about the benefits of biotechnology to our agricultural sector. So, hopefully, just by having this hearing, we can at least demonstrate to each of you, who I think give us a very well-rounded scientific approach to biotechnology. Hopefully, we've demonstrated in a small way that we do have the political courage to stand up and ensure that we're putting the facts of science over hysteria. Now, the gentleman has waved his closing remarks, and I'll use those as my closing remarks. And thank each and every one of you again for being here today and being a part of this hearing. I learned a lot, I know, and I hope that the rest of my colleagues and those in the room have done the same. And I hope none of you minded our humor, because sometimes in Washington, we have to have a little sense of humor. And thanks for participating. Under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material and supplementary written responses from the witnesses to any question posed by a member. This hearing of the Subcommittee on Horticulture Research, Biotechnology, and Foreign Agriculture is adjourned.